I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of January 3rd, 2019. To order at 6:00 PM and ask Clerk Simsky for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight, Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. At this time, open forum. If there's anybody who wants to address the board for something that's not on agenda, now's the time. Seeing none, I will close the open forum, move on to reports. For my report, there's a visual, from what I understand, and it's a sister city update. The magistrate who was very instrumental in creating the sister city, we want to congratulate Magistrate Chu. He retired from this position on December 25th.
Wow.
And we're going to look forward to welcoming his successor, Magistrate Yang. Westmont is the Bestmont Contest promotion. It's one more week to sign up for the contest. Sign up now on the Village website. And there's been a lot of publicity on this, and I understand there are a lot of talk going on about that. All right, then I will go to Clerk Simsky.
And also, don't be visuals with this. The Village offices will be closed January 21st for Martin Luther King Day. The 2019 recycle and garbage schedule is available on our website. And the Hollydies Coat Drive, over 500 coats were donated, so they did an outstanding job. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move on to Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a EDC meeting yesterday, and we had a couple proposals. GSB Development proposed a medical facility on Ogden Avenue where Las Palmas and Major Restaurant currently sits. That was met with a negative recommendation from the committee. We also had S&amp;G Partners propose a new mats car wash at 65th and Cass, and that was met with a positive recommendation from the Economic Development Committee. So hopefully that project would move forward. And then Larry Forsberg had updated us on a couple projects from our last meeting, as we've stated and we've seen. The groundbreaking from the Naddatorium was held, as everyone is so excited about the demolition at 63rd and Cass has begun, and I know the mayor has commented, we can see Mariano's from Cass now, so it's like a whole new world down there. Last week, there was a ribbon cutting at the Porsche dealer, celebrating their $20 million investment in Westmont, and we're going to be following that up with BMW's grand opening coming up soon with their new parking deck and the transformation of Westmont Drive. Also, the Ryan Development on Pasquenelli Drive is up and going now. We saw that a couple weeks ago come through the board, and that was pointed out, that's actually the largest office space in Westmont. So that's very exciting to be getting that back up and running and getting it filled. Also downtown, we wanted to point out a couple of restaurants that have reopened under the same name and same branding. Neat has reopened and is going strong, and also Amber has reopened and again is going strong. So we encourage everyone to go visit the new management at both of those restaurants. And then Greg Pill had wanted all of us to look at, we have a Walsh's review coming up, and there's a lot of interesting history from Walsh's that will be in that review along with the reviews of their pockets and so forth there. And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, not lastly, but we do have, Restaurant Week is coming up February 28th through March 10th, so we encourage all restaurants to participate, and there's going to be a lot more information coming on that. And then, this will be lastly, the State of DuPage County Chairman Dan Cronin will present at the State of DuPage County address on January 9th, and this is at 11:30, and if anyone's interested, contact the Westmont Chamber for tickets. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing that Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight, I've got, you're going to handle or I gotta, I'll let Trustee Addington?
All right, thank you. Yeah, let me handle the stuff from Trustee Guzzo. First thing is that, and this is very important, Citizens Fire Academy signup is available on our website. It's free, that's the key word there, free. It's a five-week course from March 13th through April the 10th. You learn a lot about fire prevention and fire safety, and I haven't gone through that myself, but who has? Linda? No? Bruce has. I thought, I thought one of us had, yeah.
Signups are open.
Right, exactly.
Harder than it looks.
Yeah, but everybody that has done it, and there's a lot of people that have gone through the Fire Academy have just raved about it when they're, when they're done with it. So I would recommend it to everyone. And then I would like to invite Chief Riley up. He's going to talk a little bit, apparently there was a, there was a fire down at, for students, he's going to review that for us.
Thank you, Trustee Addington. So yesterday afternoon, the fire department was very busy along with the police department. 2:53 yesterday afternoon, the fire department was called for a bus on fire inside the bus shelter at 250 West 63rd Street. Prior to going out of our offices, Chief Weiss could see the smoke coming across Cass Avenue coming at his office. As we all started making our way to our cars, we saw the header from the station and noticed that we were going to have a pretty large fire. So we got on the scene within two minutes, started to deploy holes lines, and this was an accidental fire. One of their mechanics was replacing the seats in the bus. He was replaced in the vinyl seat, and instead of using a heater of some sort, he used a torch. And the torch caught the foam on fire of the seats, and then he proceeded to try to put the fire out with extinguisher. That didn't work the first time, so we got a garden hose, that didn't work. He opened the bay door and basically fed that fire. So again, an accidental fire, but starting the year off with about $150,000 loss. Thanks to Larry McIntyre and Jenny Babiar for their expertise helping getting the press release out. I can not tell you what an asset they are to this village to assist me and the chief with getting these press releases out for the public to see. Chiefs phone in my phone, we're blowing up on the fire scene, the media's texting us, emailing us, calling us, so they are a true asset to have when we need to get those press releases out.
Any questions? Does Larry, do they handle the notify me that pops up on your phone that talked about the fire?
Do you see Riley's coming up? Was it just the vehicle that was damaged, or is there structural building damage?
We do not believe there's any structural damage. There was a heater that's above the bay door that was damaged. We called the building department, now Jason Vitell comes out to look at that. He gives the business what they need to do by getting a structural engineer out to prove that there is no structural damage to the.
Thanks. It's a repeated question.
Yeah.
Everything that we do is generated off of the initial press release. The first thing that we do is we publish it on the Village website, and when that happens, anyone who has signed up for notify me gets that alert, and then they can click on that link, takes them right to the website, and they can read that firsthand. Additionally, we put it out on Facebook in this particular case because it's a safety-related issue, and we're still in, working with a police department on these types of things. But since it was safety, we let the police department push that out on their Facebook page rather than the Village Facebook page. It also went out to the nextdoor.com to our larger region, which is, at this point, 10,000 people received that notice, and then we sent it out to local media.
Thank you.
Chief, anything you want to add to the Fire Academy?
No, you know, I urge all the trustees who have not gone through it, Larry Forsberg's been through it, it's a great program. You know, it's not to train you to become a firefighter, it's basically to give you tips for fire safety, what our Fire Prevention Bureau does, and truly what our members do each and every day. So it's just a course, you know, Lynn Drouly teaches CPR, so you do get hands-on, you know, fire extinguishers in your home to make sure you have them in your kitchen for any type of cooking fire. So it's a great five-week course, so I certainly urge the public and anyone in this room to please sign up and participate in the program.
Thank you.
And then, from my side of the street, I have two things. First one is that the next, at our next meeting here, which will be the 17th, will be, there'll be a committee meeting of the Community Development Committee. There's a lot of great information that's going to be passed out at that meeting, including where we're at with, and with permits and fees and a lot of the stuff that's been pulled in this last year. It's been an exciting year for all of us, and the dollars and cents is exciting also. So there'll be a lot of information there. Bruce, is there anything else at this point?
I'm sorry, for what?
Anything else you want to say about the meeting, the committee meeting in two weeks?
We're going to have reports on the building department.
This handsome gentleman is the head of our economic, not economic development, but building development program, so.
Yes, another introduction, Bruce Sylvester, recently hired as the Director of Community Development. So at the committee meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll have year-end reports from the building department, year-end report on code enforcement and adjudication matters. I believe that the department just started doing adjudication here locally during 2018, so we'll have a report on that activity, and then an update on some of the planning and zoning cases, including the several large and high-profile developments that have begun recently in Westmont, like the Naddatorium and some other large projects that you're all familiar with. The only other item, and I mentioned this to you briefly before the meeting, is there'll be one action item that the committee will be asked, I believe, to vote on, or at least to make a recommendation on, for the Village Board to consider later that same evening, and that is a request for a facade improvement grant from the owner of the property at 21 North Cass. So that'll be the one action item, I believe, that you'll be requested to take action on.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
And then, should mention that tomorrow starts the second half of basketball season for Westmont High School. They play at home tomorrow night against Wilmington, and they presently have a record of 15 and 2, and have won all three tournaments they've participated in so far this year. So it's a pretty good team. If you have a chance, come out and cheer them on, and so they're fun. And the last thing, and probably the most important thing, is kids, it's the New Year's, so Happy New Year, of course, is very important to say, but starting Monday, kids are back in school. So please be careful when you're out there, because kids will be again, after two weeks off, standing at bus stops and walking to school, so let's watch out for our kids. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'll go to this side, and Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things this evening. Monday night, the Environmental Improvement Committee will meet at the library at 6:00 PM, and with that, we have electronics recycling in conjunction with the county on the third Saturdays of the month, from 8:00 AM to noon on East Quincy Street, which has been an ongoing program. We have Christmas tree composting, which is January 7th through the 18th. The trees must be free of decorations, tinsel, and lights, and you put that out on your regular garbage day with your recycling and your trash container. And then we have holiday lights recycling going on at the library and the fire department headquarters from January 30th through January 31st. Again, clean recycling, no ornaments, lawn decorations, holiday decorations in that dropbox, just the holiday lights. And then, Westmont First will meet on January 22nd at the library at 6:00 PM. We had taken a month off, and we want to get back in, meeting on January 22nd. And then finally, on a personal note, condolences to Danielle from Sweet and Savory for the loss of Shane Johnson. Shane, when they had their first Sweet and Savory spot, he was part of the beginnings of Westmont First, he was a member, and a great man, and a sad loss. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Community events, there's a new event by the Park District, it's going to be their Ale Fest. It's going to be scheduled for February the 9th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM at the Ty Warner Park, and tickets are already on sale through the Park District website, westmontparks.org. Also, reaching out to everybody in the Village today to let them know that we have some volunteering opportunities. Please get involved, this is a great time to check out what we've got available and what we're asking people to do. It's a lot of fun volunteering, I'm testemoning for doing it, just because it's there. If you go to our website and read the press release on the Village site to see the opportunities to volunteer in Westmont, it's a great way to meet people and get around. And then last is a recap of the Administration and Finance Committee meeting that we had at 4:30. A lot of it dealt with the discussion of a Class 23 liquor licenses in the Central Business District, and then also discussed the upcoming budget scheduling. We'll be meeting, the first meeting in May, will be finalizing our budget, so be aware that everybody in the Village is going to be looking at us to come through with a balanced budget, which we always do. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is March 28th at 4:30 PM right here in Village Hall, and I just wanted to, the second item is just to remind all the residents that the second block of downtown east of Cass is temporarily paved, in case you're wondering why it looks different. It will be fixed to our typical construction methods, pervious concrete and pavers in the springtime. It was all done at the contractor's expense, given weather. And last but not least, Mike Ramsey, I'd like to invite him up to introduce and discuss a potential new hire here, I believe, starting the end of this month. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. Yeah, we were excited, we, as Renee mentioned in the meeting earlier, we just got done hiring, going through the process of interviewing a number of candidates, all very good, strong candidates, but we are very excited to have Chad DeFreeze, who's going to be our new horticulturist. He is coming from us, from Brookfield Zoo, he's a Horticulturist and Arboretum, Certified Arboretum for Brookfield Zoo currently. He'll be starting on Tuesday, January 22nd, the day after Martin Luther King Day, so we're very excited to have him starting for us. It's something that we've been looking for, it's something we budgeted this past year for, because we need somebody to really kind of take over and be a professional when we start dealing with the landscaping of the gateway signs and some of the depot projects we're going to be doing, and the corridor projects are going to be coming up in the next few years. It's very important to have a professional horticulturist that, you know, has the experience of knowing exactly what we need to do as far as natural plantings and flowers and all of that. So it's very exciting to have him on board, because he's very experienced with all of that. And the last thing I just want to mention real quick is that we're going to take advantage of the great weather that we're going to be having the rest of, starting on Monday, so we're going to start taking some of the Christmas lights down, so you'll be seeing us out there doing that. We're going to keep the wreaths up, because the wreaths look, still look awesome. We're really lucky with the wreaths we got this year, they're looking very, very good. So we'll keep those up, but we're going to start taking the lights down before the weather starts turning bad, because the long forecast for this month is supposed to turn colder at the end of the month, so we want to get those lights down before it gets too cold. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Mike. That's all I have, sir. That concludes our reports. We'll move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. Does any board member see anything they'd like removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
The consent agenda is short this evening. First item being the Village Board minutes, Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held December 20, 2018. This is filed by Finance Ordinance Number 17, and the amount of $1,153,801.17. It's two purchase orders, first purchase order for West Central Municipal, the amount is $26,799. This is for our annual tree planting program. And the second purchase order is to Irma, which is the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, or essentially our insurance company. The amount is $407,453.6, and this represents the annual contribution for general liability. Total of the purchase orders is $427,544.36, and that brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 17 to $1,581,345.53, and that completes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve, on the question. Anybody? Seeing none, I'd ask roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo's absent, I'm sorry. Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, A, 410 North Washington Street, the north lot, lot with variance extension. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance extension of 12 months requested by Mr. and Mrs. James Lesko. And I've got Community Development Director Sylvester going to give us some more information.
So very briefly, variance was granted for a non-conforming lot that is 48 feet wide, where 50 feet is required, and our ordinance is required that construction would be commenced within a year of the variance being granted. The property owner has indicated that they're not prepared to start construction on that lot, and they're requesting an extension of the variance to allow them time to finish their plans and keep that variance in effect.
Mr. Lesko is here, if he has any questions.
It's a 12-month extension, correct?
Yes, 12 months, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Barry.
Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve the extension, on the question. Trustee Addington said Mr. Lesko's here, anybody got, no? Be straightforward, I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Motion passes. New business B, Westmont Park District Winter Beer Fest Fee Waiver. Is this the one you just promoted?
Going to get more.
Board to consider ordinance approving a special event liquor license fee waiver for the Westmont Park District's Beer Fest. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern.
Many Mayor and Village Board, this is an inaugural event, and plans have been reviewed by the Westmont Police and Fire Departments, and myself, and have been approved by the Liquor Commissioner. The event will be held on Park District property on February 9th, 2019. The Westmont Park District will receive a one-day Class 11 license, the Park District is asking the Board to waive the $100 application fee for that license. This event will take place on Park District property, namely Ty Warner Park, from 3:00 to 7:00, again on February 9th, and I'm pleased to introduce Executive Director Bob Fleck from the Park District to talk about the event.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor Gunther, Board, Staff, thank you, and Trustee Little, thank you for the plug that you just previously gave regarding this event. Yes, this is a brand-new event, and at the Park District, we're always looking for new opportunities, creative ways to program and serve our residents. Trends change. We've noticed over time that the co-ed softball leagues, the men's basketball leagues aren't as popular as they used to be. There's different ways of socializing and recreating, and we're responding to that. And if you're not aware, Chicago is now one of the top craft brewery cities per capita in the country. The amount of craft breweries here are just, there's one almost in every community, in fact, we're, we have two here now in Westmont. So to respond to that, we've come up with Winter Beer Fest. Actually, it's the idea of our new Superintendent of Recreation Dustin Cleefish, and it's going to take place on Saturday, February 9th, after the Super Bowl, when there's not a lot of things happening during that time of year. So we are here looking for the waiver, and to tell you a little bit about it, if you have questions, but I've brought a couple things with us. We have a new logo, and these are just mock-ups, but if you're on social media, this is kind of our elf on the shelf. We're going to start bringing this hat around with the logo, taking pictures of it as we prepare for the event, and we're up to 15 breweries now. Two of them, of course, from Westmont Whiskey Hills and Scallywags are participating, and there's going to be food trucks, two heated tents, and campfires for this from 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
And, well, Scallywags isn't open yet, so, but they do have your liquor license, right, Tom?
But they have it open as of this.
Okay, so hopefully they'll be ready to go.
They are slated to be part of the event. We hope, thank you for the update.
Give a replacement.
Okay.
All right.
Big craft beer fan right behind me here.
Comments, questions?
I want to see what the hat looks like, Tom. You got it. And I have a feeling, as staff, we're going to be wearing these the day of the event, once, to keep warm, and two, so we can be identified.
It's been a while since we had one, I think the chamber did one about five years ago or so, and it was a lot of fun, so I'm glad you're bringing it back.
Yeah, we're looking to sell 750 tickets this year.
And I talked, discussed this with Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern several times, and there's no issues with this. It's a one-day event on park property, they have the appropriate insurance, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the special use liquor.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barry.
Waive, waive the special use.
It's a fee waiver.
Fee waiver. You made that motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Barry.
Motion made and second, on the question.
I just got to say, Bob, I got to get my ticket, so there's another one.
Look forward to seeing you there.
Well, the variance comes with 10 free tickets.
Bob, is that area going to be fenced in or controlled?
I have the map here, if you want to see that.
Yeah, put it up there. Because I know we've had this before, and we fenced in.
All right, so if you can see on the overhead, this is the main parking lot, Ty Warner Park at the corner of Plaza and Black Hawk Drive, and the orange line is going to be a continuous fence. We will block off that portion of the pathway that is along the west side of the parking lot. You can see the two heated tents, this is going to be our entry gate, point of entry, park patrol will be there, and we will have two police present at all times. Three food trucks, campfires in the grass, we hope there's snow that day, that will add to the atmosphere. And again, continuous fence all the way around, parking will be available, and you should know Oprah Kills is running a special rate as well for anyone attending this event. You can get the link through our website when buying tickets, and they will provide shuttle service back and forth as well.
It's a good idea. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Motion passes. We look forward to that special event.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
Moving on to new business C, increase in available Class 23 liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class 23 liquor license by one for Diana Sub Incorporated, DBA Johnny's Blitz Bar and Grill on 20 North Cass Avenue. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern.
Thank you, Mayor. Diana Sub, Inc., doing business as Johnny's Blitz Bar and Grill at 20 North Cass, submitted an application for a Class 23 liquor license, which allows them to obtain a video gaming license permission from the Illinois Gaming Board. A Class 23 license is required to provide or allow video gaming by the Illinois Gaming Board. Johnny Blitz Bar and Grill wishes to provide video gaming as an amenity for customers. The primary business will continue to be that of a restaurant. I've conducted a background review, Johnny Blitz has met all the requirements and is eligible to receive a license from the Board. The Board has asked to increase the licenses by one to allow the Liquor Commissioner to issue the license should he wish to do so. And with me tonight is John Saki, the owner of Johnny Blitz Bar and Grill, and John will explain to his plans and answer any questions that you may have. explain to his plans and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm John DeSoggi. I own Johnny's Blitz. The plan was, when I started the place, I wanted to provide the best craft beers and best burgers in town, and I hope that everyone had a chance to come in and confirm that I've done that. We've been in business for about 13 months, which makes me eligible to apply for this gaming license. In this past year, we had a lot of great experiences, and some of the experiences where we had some people come in and actually patronize our place, they've asked me for if we have gaming, and I said, no, I have to fulfill it about a year. Our business clients come in, I want to say about 50% from Westmont and 50% outside of Westmont, and that's exactly what I wanted to do, to bring other people to come into Westmont and hopefully spend their money downtown in the B1 district and stay around. So therefore, I've decided to explore this option. I would love to have it, and I ask you to approve it, and I will answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions before I entertain a motion?
Just real quick, you planned on, what kind of signage are you planning to use?
The signage is going to be very minimal. I don't like to use a whole lot of signage. We're going to have probably an LED display inside. We'll probably have gaming slots or some lettering on the window that will be removed, on and off, like an open sign, small, and possibly an A-frame on the street to show that we have it.
And John, I understand there's a separate room?
Yes. The room is in the back, basically. It's a separate room. It's away from the whole entire facility, if you will. I don't know if you remember it. When you walk in, to your right, there's an upper deck. There are the bathrooms, the mop room, and there's another area in the back of the back room. Peril to the kitchen, totally in the back.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Eddington to approve.
Second. Nero. Motion made in second to approve on the question.
I would only like to make a real quick statement that I met John when he wanted to come in here in the first place, and then he kind of indicated that he wanted to get involved in the community. He has joined, I understand, both the Lions and the Rotary Club, and has done some phenomenal things when he's had entertainment down there, and I know for a fact that he has made, has collected funds from his clientele. When they have entertainment, that money has been donated to the two service clubs to be used for scholarships. So I think, very commendable, and this is the kind of folks we want in this town, and so...
Can I add a little bit more, just in that vein?
Pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
Besides, he's also a resident.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Mayor. I think it's clear that this business was a significant investment into our downtown, one of the largest that I know of, in a good amount of time. I think it's, you know, the report that you put together, Tom, it's a great record of doing business here in town, and obviously Jim alluded to the community part as well. I think the location of the terminal's in the back of the facility, you know, I just don't see a reason to not support it personally. Thank you.
Any other comments? Did you, Trustee Eddington, did you bring that up, so if this is approved, he's got to continue to be a Lion?
No. What he's done already is almost unbelievable, I think, for the service club, so it's much appreciated, but he's, I think he's the kind of a person that probably will continue.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Any, how long it'll take you to get state approval?
From what I understand, there's a meeting at the end of January 29th, and there I'm looking forward for their approval.
Okay. Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And Johnny, I guess I should have probably commented at the open forum, but besides his burgers, his wings there are excellent. Don't forget about the wings. Thank you, Johnny.
I helped Bob and Dustin also to put that list of 15 breweries and the beers. It would be fantastic. Look forward to seeing you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. New business D, tax increment financing agreement. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an economic development agreement with holiday related to the development of the southwest corner of Cass and Quincy. I understand Financial Director Parker may want to postpone this?
Yes, this is something that we were in the process of, negotiations which are ongoing, and so we would request a motion to postpone.
How long?
To the next meeting.
Postpone them. So I'll make the motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second to postpone on the question. I guess the question is, you're, Trustee, Spencer, you're real close, and it just needs a little bit more fine tuning.
That is the hope.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's actually back in their hands now, so we're still exchanging revisions, but it's right there.
But pretty much it's been agreed to.
Yep.
Good.
Well, they've reviewed all the financial terms and have preliminarily signed off on that. It's just the rest of the body of the agreement that needs to get to them to review.
Good.
Which will happen tomorrow.
All right. No more new business miscellaneous. Any board member have anything they'd like to comment on? Seeing none?
Vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, take, roll call. I just said everybody... I thought you were going to bring it up after that. Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Okay, postpone till next meeting. Miscellaneous. I don't know if anybody, anybody, Larry, you have anything?
Oh, not that far.
These last two months have been the Mulhern show.
Oh, close. Security.
You're going to set a record.
Probably embarrassed.
Okay. He, that's rare. You don't have anything to say?
Yeah.
All right. So tonight, I do need a executive session, and we may adjourn to closed session, discuss matters so permitted, and may act upon such matters upon returning to the open session.